Seven thirty. Yeah. So first, roll call. So there's myself, Luke Maruziak, Chair, I am present. Vice Chair, Andre Test. Commissioners, Chris Aliff.
Present.
Commissioner David Goodman.
Present.
Commissioner Daryl Lambert. Don't see him there. Commissioner Niraj Mathur. Don't see him there, and Commissioner Steve Smith.
Here.
Okay, with that, I would like to. I would like to pause on excuse and absences, I'll swing back to that in just a moment. Give a few minutes, see if someone else attends. Can I get a, actually, I move that we approve the agenda for today, October third, as written, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Any opposed? Okay. And if that's the case, I'll open the meeting up to any public comments for items not on the agenda. Okay, hearing none. We'll move on. Are we ready for the council liaison report? I see Commissioner Mathers joined us, welcome.
Pardon me for delay.
All right, ready, Chair? You ready, Chair?
Yes.
Okay, great, so I have two items for, for an update. The first was, I wanted to mention that there is the possibility that we will have a miniature train museum come to Snoqualmie. And the current proposed location would be at the tree lot, the corner of Snoqualmie Parkway and Highway 202. We don't have a formal agreement or anything like that, but it is a proposal that the council is seriously considering. We may have in coming weeks, an MOU or a letter of intent or something that's slightly more formal for that process. But it's proposed to be a fairly substantial museum, it would, as currently proposed, it would have a coffee shop and just a few other really nice little amenities right there. So we'll, we'll see, it is a really impressive museum, I got to take the tour of its current location in Medina a few months ago. And it's, it's pretty impressive what they put together. The second thing I wanted to mention is that the community, Community Development Committee is going to be proposing to the council that we have a new committee that would be in place for about a year or so. It could be extended if they need more time, we'll see. But it would be an affordable housing committee that would essentially focus just on, as clue is in the title, affordable housing. Where they could look at a wide swath of possibilities and hopefully bring back to council something that is fairly specific and actionable, rather than just broad, here are things that other cities do, but you know, something that's a little bit more targeted, it's up to them what exactly it is that they would bring forward. And they would be, it would be composed of three members of the council. And they would have advisors from staff, potentially Planning Commission, potentially from the Economic Development Committee or various organizations that are out there that work with affordable housing and related topics. So they're going to use those resources to help them come up with recommendations that, that again are hopefully actionable. We will bring forward the proposal to council at our next meeting, which is, I guess, next Monday. I don't know what the exact date is of that, the tenth. And then we would probably be confirming those members at the following meeting, but just give council time to kind of think about what they want to do with regard to that committee. So those are my main items that I want to inform the commission about, but I'd be happy to take questions.
A question on the miniature railroad.
Yes.
Museum, is that part of the railroad museum?
It would not be, it would be a separate entity.
Oh, really? Okay. That's interesting.
Yeah. That doesn't mean that they wouldn't cooperate. No, there's no, there's only bad blood or anything there, it's just that they would be separate entities. There's, there's thoughts that perhaps there could be ways to connect the different facilities involving the railroad.
Okay. And the Affordable Housing Committee sounds pretty interesting, what is its? It was, it sounds like it's still in formulation stage, but as to the success criteria of the charter, when, when it comes to that point.
Yeah, I don't think that we have a specific set of criteria for what would constitute success, other than if they were to bring a recommendation to council. And if the recommendation were related to affordable housing.
Okay.
And I don't know if you saw Chair, but Commissioner Lambert has joined us.
Excellent. Full house.
Sorry for being late. All right, if there are no other questions, thank you for your time.
I did have a question about the model railway as well. What, what is it that the council would be considering and approving?
So the land is owned by the city, the staffing, correct me if I'm wrong, is that right, Jason? Yes, the land is owned by the city and the proposal would be for the museum to be owned by the city as well as currently presented. But it would be managed by a nonprofit, kind of like with the Y, the city owns the facility, but it's run by a nonprofit. And the question would just be the funding for essentially construction of such a facility that would need to be worked out. And yeah, it's in very early stages. Currently.
Yeah, beyond that, the agreement is it, it would provide the, this museum with a a, a level of certainty that the, the city is serious and is willing to go ahead with this, such that they can go through and do the work they need to do with regards to, you know, designing a building and figuring out how to fit it on the site, things like that, because right now it's it's really conceptual and their hesitant, of course, to spend a lot of money when they have no guarantee at the city. You know, is going to go forward with this, so it's, it's, it's something that would benefit both parties, because if the city council wants to execute the agreement, that's them saying, yeah, we like your concept, we want you to go forward. They get the, the applicant in this case gets the assurance that, yeah, he gets that same assurance that, yeah, the city wants to go forward, it's okay for us to go spend some money and try to make this work now, rather than just drawing, you know, some nice architectural renderings on a piece of paper that, that look great, but don't necessarily, you couldn't build that, that necessarily, so.
Thanks, I guess, I mean, has that just been kind of open for anybody to come to the city with some idea of what they'd want to do with it, or how did it end up that this, this was the thing that, or this is the thing that is getting such consideration?
You. What was? So, so in broad terms, the city has had a plan to build a park there for a number of years. And, and that hit plan has been on the books for, I want to say twenty years or so. It has never gotten to the point where the city has, as you can all tell, physically constructed such a park facility. And so, you know, it, because it keeps fall, relative to the other priorities for capital spending, the city has, that, you know, whether it's building a community center, repairing other parks we already have, repaving roads, what, whatever it happens to be. It has never risen high enough on the priority list, and so it, it, it opens the question of what is the city's vision for this property? At all. The timing on this was relatively advantageous that we, the city was approached last year about the concept. We, the city was receptive to that, said, yeah, we have a piece of property that might work for this. Because I, at the city, we recognized, yeah, we have no near term plans to actually build this park, and we are also looking broadly at what do we need? For, you know, for economic development, because of course, a, a big thing, and Councilman Johnson is, can certainly tell you about this too, we have all these, we have two million people go visit the falls. How do we get even a fraction of those people to come down Railroad Avenue to downtown? Because right now, they come down the parkway, they go to the falls, and especially with the way the trap control set up now, they're all getting shunted out toward Fall City after they're, they finish their visit, and that's a major problem for us. So it's, you know, it's the whole idea of how do we, how do we get some of these people to come toward us? So, in that regard, you know, anybody could have theoretically approached the city, but you know, if somebody wanted to build, say, an office building, I'm not sure the city necessarily would have been receptive to that, because it doesn't help with that goal of trying to draw visitors down toward downtown. The city's not particularly interested in selling that property for various reasons. You know, that's why, as Councilmember Johnson mentioned, we're, you know, currently under consideration is some kind of lease agreement, or, you know, where the city's going to phys, own the physical building. You know, you know, sit, probably maybe similar to the arrangement with the Y for the community center. So not if, if a, a typical commercial type development isn't going to fit within those parameters well or easily, and the city wouldn't necessarily desire that there, but something like this, which is more public amenity like is something that the city is certainly open to. These people happened to just, like I said, approach us with the concept, and we've been receptive to that, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Councilmember Johnson?
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, with that, I'll move on to approval of minutes dated September sixth, twenty twenty-two, I will make a motion to approve the minute stated September sixth, twenty twenty-two, can I get a second?
Second.
Yeah, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
So minutes of September sixth, twenty twenty-two are approved. Now we move into the Permit Review Design Review Board.
Do you want me to split the drawing up?
Can you do the presenting, I cannot get into Zoom, save my life.
Yes, do you want the drawing, or do you want the staff for it?
Let's start with the drawing.
Is.
Okay. All right, good evening, everyone. So I believe the, we're, we're going to start here with the assigned permit, this is twenty-two dash zero 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 eight, it's a historic design review. So this is assigned within the downtown historic district, actually, Jason, if you want, go to the second slide there.
So, yep.
The location, so the business in question here is Wild Hair Antiques. As some of you would probably be familiar with, there is a Wild Hair Antiques, or there was, the owner sold the business to a, a new owner, actually, a new pair of owners. And they have decided to keep the name, but they changed the logo. So this is just a bit of changing to match their branding and aesthetic that the new owner's going to go with. They're in the exact same location, the sign is going to go in the same place that the former Wild Hair sign was. And they have been doing some changes on the inside. And it looks pretty nice in there, so I suggest you check it out. The details that you would like to know for reviewing the sign is that it's made of a composite aluminum. The kind of, we've seen this before, but there's always a small variation in these types, these are very common in signs these days, they're backed with aluminum. And then they will use the composite part as a combination of acrylic and aluminum, the acrylic in this case is the lettering, so where you see where it says Wild Hair Antiques and Vintage Finds, that's a, an op, like a laser cut acrylic sheet that they cut out and they add it to the backer board, which is the aluminum. And then the sign gets attached with structurally significant fasteners that's reviewed by our building department to make sure it's never going to go anywhere under high winds. This is pretty common, it's actually not just common, it's, it's the most common type of sign material that I have seen. Going forward, a couple of examples of this are the last Historic Design Review sign material that was of this type. Angle and Volkers had this, as well as Cafe Mini, their signs are also made of this composite material, things that are relevant maybe for the rest of it, we have a couple of types of code details that describe objectionable qualities to signs in the historic district, specifically bright pink fluorescent colors, things that are overly bright, which I do not believe this qualifies us. A few other things, this is a temporary sign, there is some details about avoiding synthetic looking materials, so to bring that to attention, generally, when we've been looking at that is to be aware of the amount of acrylic and the way it's finished. And the finishing here is this kind of a standard matte finish that you'll see on pretty much any sign, actually. Been pretty cautious with any of our requests to make sure that they don't go with the there's a type of acrylic that looks very plasticky, and so avoiding that at all costs, so to check in with that here. Then the last bits are size, which the sign meets the sign size requirements for a sign in the historic district, which is twenty square feet, you can see the math there in the dimensions, top right of the of the image there. So I'll, I'll go ahead and pause, leave for any questions or thoughts, considerations.
So from the staff review, this is in keeping with the historical design board or design recommendations?
Yes, yeah, this is in keeping with historic decisions by this board or the planning commission. And this tracks with the written standards that are in our municipal code for signs in this area. I don't see anything that would go against those.
Okay, any other commissioner wish to ask question, comment?
It's a nice looking sign, let's approve it.
Okay. I will move that we approve DRB twenty-two dash zero 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 eight, the Wild Hair sign as presented, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Be opposed? Okay. The number two Wild Hair sign is approved as presented. All right, thank you, let me shift gears.
So if the chair is amendable, we have another design review.
We see the Salish Lodge Porte Cuchara. Is that what we're talking about?
Yes. Port, come on. There we go. So this is a design review for a port cacher at Salish Lodge, and so what they are proposing is to build this new covered structure that extends out over the driveway, you can see their existing portico area here, this is obviously black and white's drawing here. And they would build this new one over the top that would provide them with more of a covered entranceway. And so, let me scroll down, so you can see from their site plan here, this is Railroad Avenue coming by, their main drive, circular little driveway here, and you could see where it would, it would extend over. The let's see, they have, oh. This is the best one we can look at, their, their design intent here is to make this look like what they already have built. It's the same materials, the same style with, with the shingles and the, and the exposed beams. They certainly are not looking to do anything that would detract from or, or change the fundamental appearance of the facility. Because they certainly want to maintain that as part of, you know, the, the iconic nature of the Salish Lodge. So, because it's a new development, it does require design review, this is regular, if you want to call it that, design review and not historic design review. And so the requirements are a bit different, there is a staff report in the in the material packet which walks through all the design criteria, which I won't walk through here. But I'm certainly happy to answer any questions the planning commission might have on this.
So any potential issue with emergency vehicles pulling up the front?
No, there's not, this, this will be, the overall dimensions of this are, it's, it's twenty feet high.
Okay.
Out twenty-one or twenty-two feet in, in width, so it'll, there will be plenty of clearance under there.
Okay.
I mean, you can, you can see from the drawing, it's got more clearance in the portico, the existing portico, so you, you could drive a fire truck under it.
Will there be lighting fixtures and some type of lighting that goes underneath there that, I, I just couldn't tell, I just don't know if there was like.
Yeah, there. There will be, but they're not, it's, they're not shown at this stage, and so what we've, what we've added here, and you, this is in the staff report. You know, what we've done, because they're not showing lighting, is add a condition here at the end to submit the proposed lighting designs to the director for approval prior to construction, that's to ensure that they are integrated and, and appropriate for the, for this for the structure. You know, not have exposed light bulbs hanging down or anything like that.
Okay. Any other commissioner questions?
Am I understanding the diagram correctly, in that they're adding a pair of pillars to the existing portico to support the rear structure?
That's correct, so these, these ones here would be, would be new, and they would come up through the existing portico to support it, because the existing ones, you can see, are set a little further back, and they're also smaller in dimension. The, in these drawings here, these are the architectural drawings they submitted, you can actually sorry, let me zoom in, so you can see this a little better. So you can see what they're doing is they're replacing they're, they're saying, can't even read that, I'm sorry. It's too tiny, it says existing columns do you replace in same location and extend to proposed roof above, so they're going to, you know, they're going to have this four column on either side approach to support it properly. So yes, there are new ones, it's, it's certainly going to make a, be a minor change to their exist, because but it will, you know, that's what they need to hold this thing up.
Understood, thanks.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other questions? The, and commissioners? Well, actually you mean, I actually think it'd be a, a welcome addition to somebody who's driven up there when it's been raining or something. So I will make a motion to approve DRB twenty-two dash zero zero one zero Salish Lodge Porte Cuchara as presented by staff. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion, questions? All in favor, say aye.
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 Be opposed? Okay, so that permit review has approved as, written as proposed by staff. Okay. Moving on to the next agenda item, legislative policy items and regulations. Number four, the Historic Design Review Procedures Code Amendment.
Sure, that one will be me again. So, this is, I'm just showing the, the memo that's included in the packet. So as, as the commission is likely aware, the reviewer of a historic design review project earlier this year pointed out some, some issues with the procedures we have for historic design review. What we're looking at doing is making some amendments to the code to address those, at least the procedural issues, we're not talking about the substantive you know, the actual design criteria that are in the code, that's a separate discussion that, that is going to, that would require a different set of you know, we may have to get some additional expertise, that's a different discussion, this is just on the procedural things that we've identified. You know, some of those we identified is, are things that have never, never been implemented, for example, it was identified through the, through some of the questions in the appeal that the code says we're supposed to send all these applications for historic design review, all of them, to King County Historic Preservation Staff, that has never been done in the history of Snoqualmie here for any of these projects. You know, and that, while that may be an oversight on the part of staff over a number of years, not just the current staff, but staff previously, it also leads to the question of what are we you know, what are we trying to accomplish with historic design review? And, and what information is valuable? And when we're reviewing these? We've also looked at, well, what kind of projects are subject to board review for, for historic design review versus what types of projects are reviewed just by staff for historic design reviews, so there's already a number of things that, that staff looks at that don't need to come to the Historic Design Review Board. What we're looking at as far as, you know, potentially streamlining some things is, should we adjust that list? The sign you just saw, maybe, you know, there's a, a, a good, there's a good discussion to be had about whether sending signs in the historic district to the board for review is is the best use of resources, both the board resources and staff resources, when, you know, you know, when you want to have the question of what is, is the board adding enough to that process to make it valuable? That, that, that's a perfectly reasonable discussion to have. We're looking, you know, one of, one of the outgrowths of this appeal was staff identifying, we need to fit some of these, or not some, but all of these historic design review types into the city's per, permit categories, so the city has four permit categories, one through four. They are varying levels of approval and review depending on, you know, do they need environmental review, for example, or are they a high enough level that they need to have neighbor notice? In general, we're going to be looking at types one, two, and four, so types, type one is something that's so low level, it doesn't require notice. It's approved by staff, it does not require environmental review, you know, this is going to be something like, you know, are they repaint, are they repainting their building with an approved color, yes or no? That's some, that's an example of something that could be category one, it does, you know, it's, it's, it's just a yes or no question. Versus if they're trying to build a brand new building, that's something the board should probably look at, that's something that we consider category four permit, because it is reviewed by the the, is reviewed by the planning commission and they make a decision. So a lot of work to fit that in. Another thing we're looking at is, how does the Landmarks and Heritage Commission really fit into this process? That commission exists for good reason, when we're considering landmarks. They are, the Landmarks and Heritage, Heritage Commission can act as the Historic Design Review Board for certain type three projects, which is to say, certain projects that affect contributing buildings in the landmark district. They can also act as an appeal body for type two projects, for example, construction of a new building or modification to a non-contributing building that is within the landmark district, so the question is is that an appropriate role for that landmark commission, which frankly has not even met for, I'm not sure how many years? That, the other issue with that particular commission is that it is fundamentally a King County Commission, it's the King County Landmarks and Heritage Commission, with the addition of a Snoqualmie member, that member, and it, the term may have expired, we need, we, we haven't figured that out yet, is Snoqualmie historian Dave Batty, who unfortunately no longer even lives in the valley. So one thing we're looking at is, well, maybe we need to remove the Landmarks and Heritage Commission from permit, the permit review process and focus them just on landmarks, which is likely a more appropriate function for that commission. Along with these, there's also some clarification of appeal procedures in Title fourteen of the code, that's our general permit processing chapter, it talks about, you know, how do you apply for a permit, here's the permit categories. How do you, how are appeals handled depending on what category permit it is? And then finally, clarifying the deadline, because that was a question that came up, what is the deadline for filing the appeal? It, you know, it's, it says a certain number of days, but it doesn't specify, is it five PM, is it midnight, is it seven PM? And so just add that clarification in. So you can see the, these, these are all laid out in summary here. And you can see what, you know, what our overall goal, excuse me, goal is with this, we're trying to streamline things, we're trying to ensure some consistency. And we're trying to line things, line what the code says up with with our actual practice. So there's some, some additional analysis here, I'm happy to have a discussion about any or all of these items, and like I said, certainly the, the planning commission's aware of, of how the, the one project went and some of the issues that arose from that. But we're also trying to be very forward looking here of, of you know, what do we want historic design review to look like going forward? So. So. Happy to take questions.
Well, it seems like a a cleanup of some things we were doing. I actually thought there was a provision for the planning commission to um be in lieu of not just historic design review, but also the King County project. I didn't think uh that required to be removed, but um, so be it if it is. No, it seems to be a cleanup of a lot of things we've been doing or been talking about.
Yeah, the particular, the the code provision in particular, let me find it here seventeen thirty five. So so this code section here seventeen point thirty five point zero five zero. It creates the historic design review board itself. And you can see it is intended to be a sep- a completely separate board separate from the planning commission and and it has, you know, these members. So you'd have a member of the planning commission. And then you'd have, you know, somebody who um from the Meadowbrook or excuse me, from the downtown or Meadowbrook Historic District, you need to have somebody from the downtown landmark district. You need to have the the special member of this of the landmarks and heritage mission, meaning Mr. Batty. And then you could have somebody else with a demonstrate interest, you know, um, and that could that could be a number of people in with you know, within Snoqualmie. We have, we have many citizens and who have lived here, both short term and long term that have this demonstrate interest and or expertise. This commission isn't or this board has never been created, even though this code provision was adopted here in two thousand and one. What the a code amendment that was approved now four years ago in twenty eighteen added this this provision seventeen point thirty five point oh five five, which designated the planning commission as the interim historical design review board. That's how the commission is able to act on historic design review items. Other what without this, the commit the commission does not have the legal authority to act on historic design review applications. Um, so in that regard, that was a cleanup to address the the issue of this historical design review board not actually being in existence. Um. Whether and how to address this, I know the planning commission made a recommendation as part of the the historic downtown relook to actually go create this board. Um, the administration and the council have not acted on that particular recommendation yet. It's something that will remain under discussion. The landmarks and heritage commission is is created by this section here seventeen point thirty five point zero six zero. It describes um, this and it says it shall consist of the King County Landmarks and Heritage Commission created under the King County Code with the special member appointed by the mayor confirmed by the council, which as I said is Mr. Batty. That so this commission actually exists, uh, whether Mr. Batty would be available, should this the Snoqualmie version of this be needed is unclear. We, you know, I haven't ta- I haven't talked to him in in a number of months at this point um about, you know, at all. Certainly, we could appoint a i- if he were unavailable, we could probably appoint a new member should be necessary. But um, to the bigger point, you know, when we're talking about land use issues, um, this commission being a King County Commission is is difficult to schedule. Um, you know, awkward to work with because it's not fundamentally a Snoqualmie commission. Um, and so as we look to in in broad terms, when you know, how do we want to run our land use process? It's it is much better for for us to be working with city Snoqualmie bodies, whether it's the planning commission or the hearing examiner or the city council. Um, just because we can work on scheduling, we can work on, you know, addressing issues with any project that that is before them in a way that is very difficult with an outside body.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments, some commissioners? Thank you, Jason.
Yep. So our our intent here is we'll bring you some actual code language to to pour over for your for your following meeting. Uh, this was the introduction tonight uh with with the memo and kind of summarizing where we're at. But um, we would bring you, you know, that once you could have a look at the code language, we could, the commission can decide on, you know, are you ready for a public hearing to get some public input on it uh in preparation for making a recommendation to the city council on it?
Okay. And what do you think would get that?
Uh, well, you'll see the you'll see the code amendment language for your next meeting, which will be on the seventeenth of October. So so look for that. And then, like I said, once you've had a chance to at least see the code language, then we can talk about uh, you know, any additional comments the commission might have and and look to scheduling a public hearing at that point.
Good, very good. Okay. I look forward to that. So with that, I'd like to move on to the agenda item number five. The uh short course follow up, I'd just like to talk to this for a bit. Uh, so we did have the short course last month. And uh, there were four of us who attended. I attended. Uh, Commissioner Lambert attended, Commissioner Goodman attended, Commissioner Vice Chair Testman attended. And it was uh recorded, so we actually can uh make it available for everybody. Now, one of the things that came out, and I don't know, Jason, if you have a copy that you can share one of the certificates is we can um basically certify that we've attended this short course either when it was done live or when it was done. You know, uh, or we watched the recording of it. And I think it's important that as a professional planning commission, I know that um, all of us are volunteering our time. I know some of us like Commissioner Goodman have a depth of experience in this. Um, or Commissioner Smith, who has been doing this for for quite a while. Um, but even though I've been here for a few years, it was a it was a very useful thing to go through the short course on local planning. And I've prepared for these certificates. And you see the one that I've done that I self-certified from September nineteenth, that um uh, we can get out to Vice Chair Testman, uh, Commissioner Goodman, Commissioner Lambert. Um, I would like to uh ask if Commissioner Alef uh, Mather and Smith, if you could um watch the recording and we can prepare certificates of you that all of us are on the same page. And that's really what the idea this is, is that the the training on the Open Public Meetings Act and others um against staff could help. But we're all supposed to go through this periodically. So they're all familiar with um how to do business with each other. So I found it very valuable that and um, again, four of us have got this that uh we can go ahead self-certify certificates. We'll get those out. But the three who haven't, um, what I'd like to do is get the link to you guys. So you guys could go ahead and at your convenience. Um, listen to the recording and then self-certify.
I agree.
Good.
In favor, yeah, great.
Okay.
Sounds like a sounds very reasonable. Thanks.
Okay, good.
Just just a favor, I still have not been able to get my city Snoqualmie email yet. I I don't know if it's possible for me to get it on my personal email and I'll read through it and um, watch the course.
Yeah, and Commissioner Mather, you're um, when when you attended, your your approach has been extremely valuable. Um, so yeah, I actually chatted with the Commissioner Mather a while ago, and it has been months we've been trying to get his city email working. Um, can we make this a priority? Uh, I don't know who's the right person to talk to, Jason, uh, or say we make this priority because.
I I spoke with the I T department. I unfortunately, I just, what ends up happening is I end up finishing work right as they finish their work hours. And so we just keep missing each other. That's been the challenge.
Um, we we can, we can prod them again because the our I T department does have the ability to do. I mean, uh, they do have supportive able after hours. Um, so we we'll talk to the I T director and and get this cleared up because this has taken way too long.
Thanks. I appreciate it, guys. Uh, I sincerely apologize. I haven't been as active sometimes because I keep missing the the logs.
Yeah, no, appreciate that. Really appreciate that because I think we've got a very strong commission and I know that all of us are volunteers, all of us, you know, have to give up some special time, but uh, what we've got coming up for the city is is pretty important with the upcoming uh things that we have to do for the complaint and others. And I think the one it's important that we're all on the same page with the short course follow up. And again, I know some are much more experienced than others. And the second is that we um, we're hitting on all cylinders as the schedule unfolds. So.
All right. As far as the certificates, I can say we do have, um, certainly we have PDF versions of for the four of you who attended. Um, Commissioner Lambert, if you want a hard copy, we've got, I've got it printed out upstairs. I can hand it to you if you'd like tonight. Or I can just email it to you. It's up to you. Email. Okay, I will email them around. If you would like a hard copy, please let us know. We're happy to to get that. And then um. I I was just looking, I don't see that we have managed to post the video to our YouTube channel yet. I know we okay, I I know we downloaded it.
Yeah, please, let's make that urgent priority so we can, we can check mark that. And again, the idea is that we're all, we're all working on the same page. Okay.
But yeah, we'll get the video, we'll get the video up and get you get all the entire commission a link for that.
Thank you. Thank you. And then um, item number six, the planning commission planning schedule. Can we show that?
Yes, one second. Sorry, scribbling notes and now I gotta get back to, okay. I apologize, this is difficult to read, but we'll zoom it in. We can scroll around. So uh, for the planning schedule, you can see on a here on the third of October, we have, we had design review items. We talked about the short course and the introduction on the historic design review board code amendment. Um, coming up on October seventeenth, what we are anticipating is the A H N A stands for Housing Needs Assessment. Um, we'll look, take a look at uh, get an update and and some early review on that. We're looking at having a de- design review board. This is regular design review for gear automotive. This would be over um, at the former uh bank there at Meadowbrook and Railroad Avenue. And then and it uh, well, we already had the introduction to the site plan code amendment uh at a previous meeting. And so we'd be looking to bring the the actual code language back. We'd also bring the 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 historic design review board procedures code member back. So you'd see both of those simultaneously. They're not, they're not necessarily linked, but they are uh it it can be helpful to the commission to consider both of those together because they together they are making some some changes to how we do both design review, but also looking to add that a- as we discussed the prior meeting add as this site plan review uh process for us to help, just to help us with our with our review procedures uh, looking at things that, you know, require one part but not another, just trying to bring it all together and in one nice umbrella and give us a better um, avenue to to consider these projects a little more holistically. Um, going forward, you know, looking into November, we're look, you know, we'll have some more talking about the conference of plan review and you know, get an introduction there and then talk about the housing um, the housing element later on in December. Looking at potentially having design review for the Northwest Railway Roundhouse Project there in November. That's that's tentative at this point, but we're hoping that'll stick. Um, and and that's what we have for now. I don't think this one's gonna, this other one here, no, that's going to be uh needed at the planning commission.
And Jason, give just a a very brief uh introduction to the comp plan.
Sure. So the uh, as you've all heard, the the city is required to perform a part pardon the term, a comprehensive update of its comprehensive plan uh, by the end of December twenty twenty four. Um, this is a a and this is typical, you know, there every so often all we have to do this this major update to to make sure that our plan remains remains current, remains relevant. Because the last time we did a major update, of course, was in twenty fourteen. And so as part of this update, we're going to look at the entire comprehensive plan uh and its components. Um, um, elements, so the land use element, the housing element. Because there've been a lot of changed circumstances, certainly over the last eight years. Uh, you know, for example, as as you've all been hearing, affordable housing is a a major issue in a way that it was not uh, quite as major an issue eight years ago, uh, for one example. You know, as far as land use, the the city has continued to grow and and Snoqualmie Bridge has gotten built built out. And so the city's land use focus is now shifting away from building out Snoqualmie Ridge to, well, what's gonna come next? Of course, we have the Millsite Project that's under review by the city council. But then there are other things such as, you know, what might we do with the U G A areas, you know, with annexation and and what development in those areas might look like? With transportation, you know, we need to account for the various road improvements that have been built. Um, and and look to, you know, what might we need going forward, but also transportation is not just about roads and cars and we'll we'll need to consider our entire transportation network. You know, how do people walk and bike around town, not just in particular neighborhoods of town. So it's not strictly speaking focused, for example, just on downtown or, you know, or around Center Boulevard. But but how do we create this this holistic transportation network throughout the city and what are the investments we might need to make? Um, parks and open space has its own plan, which is considered an element of the conference. We kicked that process off with the Parks and Events Commission last month. And that will continue uh o- over the coming months with Parks and Events Commission. The planning commission will get a chance to look at that plan as well because it does form a component of the conference of plan. Economic development, again, we're, you know, as we build out Snoqualmie Ridge, now there's a um, there's a, of course, a bit of a shift in, well, wha- what what economic development opportunities are there? What does the city need as far, you know, whether it's stores, services, the um, all those things? Because we have, um, you know, we have the current plan and things that we want to focus on. The question now is, well, what what do we need to do for the next eight to ten years uh going forward, not just, you know, and and update all that. So that's that's the brief overview of of what we're looking at. This is gonna be a, you know, a a long process. Uh, we we don't think we're gonna get through this in in a month or or six months. It's gonna take us um, especially with some of these meteor elements, it's gonna take us a number of months. Uh, and there's a lot of work that's gonna go into this. So uh, the entire department is going to be part of this process, working through it. Um, and the commit planning commission is a very, is a critical part of this process, both for for getting these extra eyes on it. Uh, but help, but also, of course, getting in front of the public because public participation and involvement is is also, first of all, it's legally required, but also it's 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 very important that we get the public feedback and get the public involvement in this plan because it's, this plan is laying out how the city intends to grow and change over the coming twenty year period. Uh, and and it's gonna affect everybody who lives and works here. And I see uh Commissioner Mather has a question.
You know, the there's so many variables in this comprehensive plan. I just, I think it's fantastic we're gonna do it. I'm just wondering if we have access to either a county or a state um, group of economists or an economist that can kind of give us um maybe some inputs um as we do this or review this comprehensive plan because what's happening today is not static in our local city as well as, you know, our region. And I think that's going to affect some of the, some of the investments that we want to make. Um, and and maybe even revenue and 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 things like that. So I'm just wondering if that's, that's already part of the activity in the comprehensive planning uh process.
Yeah, I would, this is Emily Articia, the Community Development Director. I just um like to say that, yeah, you're absolutely right. And um, there's an opportunity coming up uh, next Monday with the Puget Sound Regional Council that will be providing some more information, some more data, some more demographics about um, the need to update this plan and how the region as a whole, you know, um, is is moving forward to meet the Growth Management Act and the twenty fifty. You know, the plan, Vision twenty fifty, and individual cities as they move forward with their own comprehensive plan updates. There's also an opportunity um with an economist at Puget Sound Regional Government that I've been speaking with regarding data and demographics, uh, specifically to 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 help and lend a hand with um, the Economic Development Commission as they move forward with their work on uh, the economic development element. Um, but perhaps there's an opportunity for the planning commission um, and the Economic Development um committee to work together, economic board board, I should say, to work together more closely about what that means and how they're gonna move forward.
I think that's intriguing. And and so I I'll close my comments. I just think it's, it's great that we have access to that and um, and it's great that that collaboration's already happened.
Good. Thank you. Anything else, Commissioner Mather?
No, no, not at this time. I just, this is good news.
Definitely. Any other comments on the the schedule?
Uh, Chair, can I ask a question?
Please.
Uh, so I was wondering about uh on the roundhouse. It looks like the uh, public hearing is going to be. Uh so I was wondering about uh on the roundhouse. It looks like the uh public hearing is going to be uh at the first meeting on it. And it could be, that's just how our rules and procedures say you're supposed to do things. It just seems like there have been times in the past where at the first meeting, we hold the quote unquote public hearing, and then the public finds out about it on that day or whatever, and they would have liked to have come, and they would come to the next one, but there isn't a public hearing at the second meeting where potentially decision is made. So um I was just wondering, would there be an opportunity at the next uh meeting for public uh comment? Um could the hearing be moved there or is that improper, et cetera? Guess that's staff.
Yeah. And no, it is a good question. Um and and you're right that there are times when people don't hear about, but first they hear about is when the planning commission is talking about it. Um we can, we can certainly move the public hearing around. It's 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 not that big a deal because, you know, and and certainly, as you heard, talking about items in front of the city council, you know, it it is beneficial to do what to the body that's considering it to have the benefit of public input um before they really try to deliberate and and dive into it, make a decision, because the public can often see things that the commission doesn't, that staff doesn't, uh or they just may have things they want to share that are important to consider. Um so absolutely, we we can play with the schedule. This, especially as we get into November, I consider the schedule to be at least somewhat tentative, just because of the nature of you know, trying to get everything lined up. This project is one that's been going for quite a while, and we we are hopeful we will get it to design review in November, but that may not actually happen for various reasons. Um so and for the planner who's working on Dinah Reed, who's been with the city for a few months now, or as the new senior planner, she's on vacation right now. Uh otherwise, we'd have her here to speak to it a little, a little more. So our apologies for that.
Let me, let me ask. That I could imagine there being some excitement around.
Yeah.
Let me ask a follow up question though, because I I do uh know exactly what um Councilmember Johnson is talking about. I mean, would it be possible to have a discussion on the roundhouse? And the the dates could change, but right now we have the um commissioner discussion on the roundhouse, plenary discussion on November seventh in some pretty good detail. And then have the public hearing on the twenty first after that discussion, uh where we could, we could take any input or whatnot, finalize the discussion, then vote, because I think um I I think what prompts the public wanting to do more is, you know, at post discussion, they would have said something. Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, absolutely it does. And so we can, li- like I said, we can, we can definitely look to just switch the, you know, switch the public hearing to the second um second meeting so that people have a chance to digest it and and then provide some hopefully useful comment to the planning commission.
Yeah. So why do we do that? I mean, that's almost, um maybe do I need to make a a motion for that?
No, it's it it's it's a scheduling thing. We can just address it.
Yeah, so so let's do the
Dylan's already done it.
In in-depth discussion, I will call it in-depth in induct introductory discussion of the roundhouse on the first meeting and right now scheduled the seventh, and we'll have the public hearing and finalize discussion on the second week. Once we do that, I think that will solve the issue which which I aware I raised by Councilmember Johnson.
Can I just make a clarifying thing? Um just to make sure, so the key here for for me in the planning schedule is just to make sure that we're trying to outline and sketch out the almost the busyness of the meeting, so that way I'm aware of them, what they are. And this gives me a chance, because in any public hearings, we have to do all this public noticing ahead of time. So again, this is just loose, but the if I understand right, I so I we might have to push this back. That's what I'm saying. So when you see it again, it might not be November seventh and November twenty first. Could be.
Understood.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
In this particular project may may act, may honestly push much further out because of some of the issues there, there they continue to work through. Um like I said, this project has been in process for quite some time and there's a lot of things that, there's a lot of balls in the air for this project. And so and you know, when when we get a chance to talk to Da- to Dinah again, when she's back from vacation, that this project may end up getting just just pushed out. You know, a- after the first of the year, um be because of just where they're at. So um but but we definitely hear you on the public hearing thing, and we will uh make that change as we go forward, not just for this, but for any other design review item that's coming forward that that was going to garner some more discussion.
Good, good. No, thank you. And thank you for that, Councilmember Johnson. So one thing that I I do want to make sure we do, we've got uh the full planning commission here is that we do a roundtable for items of planning commissioner interest. And I want to make sure everybody has an opportunity to be queried. So I'm going to start no particular order. Um Vice Chair Testman, any additional items of planning commissioner interest?
Night, no, I appreciate it.
Okay, uh Commissioner Alef.
I'm sure some of the results on the sidewalk repair project this summer.
Okay.
That's it, just an update.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. And then Commissioner Goodman?
Uh just want to say I appreciate the calendar. It's really helpful. Um and nothing other than that.
Good. Commissioner Lambert?
Nope, I'm good.
Commissioner Mather?
Nothing. For me.
Commissioner Smith?
Read nothing at this time either.
Okay, I I'd like to add just one thing. After it kind of prompted by the uh tree lot and the miniature train, uh one of the things that we talked about for years, actually, to really pull folks from the falls to the downtown was the Riverwalk. And not looking for a comprehensive answer now, but I would like at some future date, an update on the Riverwalk and how that's scheduled.
Would you, would you want a short one right now?
Sure.
Okay, so the Riverwalk, which is broken up into lots of phases, but I'll give you the thing that I think is the key. Uh we are prioritizing what we call phase one. It gets other names too. Uh the critical part for us was achieving some funding from Washington Department of Commerce or the State of Washington. It's actually a direct appropriation, but uh steering clear of all that, the issue was getting the contracting together such that we could start to spend the money uh and recover our costs. Um last or not, not la- was it last Monday or this? I forgot what what month, what week I'm on. Uh last Monday, we approved that contract with Commerce, and we are going to be moving full steam ahead on Riverwalk Phase One. Uh that will include the sections between Kimball Creek and the downtown. Insofar as how it exactly looks and feels, I don't have all those answers yet, because I had to make some changes to the scope in order to achieve the requirements that the state was going to have for us in getting that contract signed. So we have the contract signed. Some of the scope changes have been made and implemented. I'm going to now take those requirements and scoping back to our design team. We're going to have to fiddle with it. Take advantage of maybe new opportunities that exist for us today that didn't then. Uh possibilities and some cost kind of moving around to try to make a better product for the city that is now, rather than what we designed for in twenty eighteen or twenty seventeen. Um and that's the the status of that. A piece of that will be how it interacts with Sandy Cove, which is having a revatment done uh next year in the summer. So Sandy Cove will be very muddy here soon and more or less a construction site. So don't uh anyway, I'll leave it there. That will obviously have a big impact on how Riverwalk is going to connect to the downtown. So part of uh the next steps are going to be interacting with that revatment project as well as Town Center Phase Three, which is in design right now. And that's for the trail that would be parallel to Riverwalk, but on the other side of Highway two oh two. Um that's in designs right now, and we're moving forward with some pretty good ideas. We're looking at alternative concepts for the bridge structure that's over Kimball Creek, as well as how it connects the the two oh two bridge over the Snoqualmie River. So it's a, it's like a few moving parts and the Riverwalk is moving now. And so that's kind of I'm kind of just getting everything back back to moving, starting to spin all the plates again, or whatever the metaphors are, but there's a lot of interconnection between projects, and that's kind of the current status of that.
Good, thank you. Thank you for that. Okay. With that, I move uh af- after completing all the agenda items, I move that we adjourn the meeting. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Thank you, everybody.
Good meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Night all.
Everybody.